I call the Dixon County Commission to order the October 20th, 2016 meeting. Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For our agenda today, we want to add a five-minute executive session with our counsel, Doug Thompson, for attorney-client privilege. And also, one of the items on our agenda was bids for a grapple fork. And we plan to table that to get more information on the specs on that. So I move we approve the agenda with those corrections.
Second.
Been moved to second. All fair say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, mostly carried. Consent agenda, only minutes of the October 13th work session and regular meeting. Payroll of $341,844.43. Fund expenditures of $251,229.18. Credit card wire payments of $25,351.95. Utilities wire payments of $9,788.83. And capers wire payment of $37,915.58.
I'd move that we accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? If not, all fair say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, mostly carried. Commissioners comments and committee reports. Lynn, do you want to start?
I'll just mention that this past week, I had a Central Kansas Mental Health Board meetings over at SLYNA on Monday. And one of the things on that, you know, previously Sheila Biggs said that she was going to go ahead and resign the first of the year. And she's served on there a long, long time. But Dixon County has one other person that they can't appoint. And kind of the discussion over there, what they were hoping is that perhaps we could put that on our agenda in the next week or two. We have a candidate for consideration. But they would like to see the process go into effect just from the standpoint that if that person, you know, was able to attend some of the board meetings, they could kind of get an idea of what's on the agenda. And it just, you know, might make it just a smoother transition. And Sheila does plan to, to attend, you know, the meetings that we have in the next couple of months. But anyway, that was one item. And the other part will be on Kansas Association of Counties. We're having a conference call on Friday just to go over some legislative issues. And just kind of from budgetary type things, it seemed like it was easier to do with a conference call rather than have all of us travel into Topeka and pay the mileage and the time involved in travel. So that's going to occur tomorrow morning. That's all I have.
Okay, great.
Yeah, Brad and I attended a Justice Center presentation at the Monday evening at this Over Solomon. There was nine members present. Thought it went well. I also attended the utility meeting with the people that are interested, that might have interested the utilities that would be affected by the new building. It was about probably 12, 12, 14 people present at that meeting. Went well. West Star and AT&amp;T didn't show up. And West Star had been contacted earlier. So if there's any unforeseen things that'll be happening. The Hersberg, the entrances that were coming off, the way it's laid out now, there'll be two, two entrances coming into existing parking lot. So that, he's happy with that. The other deal was the sidewalk. Trying to move it to come across from the existing parking lot we've got across the street. So, SLYNA.
I, I attended the, the Lions Club meeting with Gareth and also was presenting the Justice Center proposal to them and had a big turnout over there. And like I said, I thought we had a good crowd there that, that, for our presentation. Also, yesterday, I had my juvenile detention board meeting down in Justice City. And I had mentioned previously that we had written, had gotten written up on some violations that they thought that we had had. Well, anyway, now, there's been a change at the Department of Children and Family. They, Denise Stevens is now the Director of the Foster Care and Residential Facility License Division. And they've met with her and she seems to be very cooperative in working with us over there. So it's kind of a breath of fresh air that we actually had somebody that wanted to work with us. And so they had already worked out some of the, she's already dismissed some of the violations that, and also she said that she was more willing to work with us to get that resolved. So hopefully that will go smoother now. Let's see. Chancey was in and gave his report on emergency management and I guess that was about all. Presentations, a petitions proclamation, another public comment. We haven't done today. So Brad, you can start with your update.
Okay. Just to reiterate, let you know that Chancey, we kind of phoned you this morning, but due to some health concerns with the emergency manager in Clay County, Chancey has agreed to help Clay County uncover any situations they have up there that may need an emergency management response. Haven't had anything so far, don't anticipate anything, but you never know. But with their emergency manager being down with some health concerns, why they were concerned that they had, if something happened, they needed somebody to respond, they'd have that expertise. And I'm sure that we were available to help with if the need arose. So just to let you know that. We'll be helping them out if something happens. Got an invitation from the, what you guys may have gotten from 4H, the achievement banquet. And just needed to check and see if you wanted, wanted us to make reservations for you.
Yeah, Jeanelle and I both. What day was that? I had the...
November 22nd.
Twenty-second, Tuesday evening.
Which is Tuesday, yeah.
Invitation home. Yes, I, I will attend, just myself.
We'll make reservations for you. And then we talked a little bit in the work session about the speed on the request on Union Road. I will get back with the council and discuss that one a little bit more. It would be our recommendation from John Joff and Martin and I that we not do that. But we'll, we'll discuss it with them some more and see if we can work that out before we bring it back to you. We've had a busy week working on the EWP project for the storm cleanup. Very productive week. We've got 95% of the easement agreements back. We're waiting on a couple more that are out of state. But everyone has been extremely cooperative and appreciative of the fact that we applied for that. We've got that going. We also put together our plan of operations and the numbers that we will, we're applying to NRCS to use as our cleanup for our 25% match. So hopefully we'll know something in the next few days as to whether that's been approved or not. So the last thing that I had was just to talk a little bit about the Community Advisory Committee that we intend to put together for the justice project. Obviously, that group of individuals, the intent behind that would be to get an unbiased opinion on the project and the needs, to completion of the needs assessment. And then hopefully utilize those people in the community to go out and help us sell, sell the needs to the public. So the big question is how do we go about soliciting people that would love to serve on that and put their time in? My suggestion would be to get our stakeholder group together again, update them on the project and where we're at at this point, even though most of them may probably know. But use their knowledge and expertise to try and, and probably the department heads too, use their knowledge and expertise to try and select some people, if you will. Come up with some names and see if we can...
How big a committee? I mean, that, in my opinion is...
Yeah, the size. I don't think we're going to have any problem getting too many people, probably.
Yeah.
Well, I'm sure, I mean, it'd be given thought to get some balance as far as spread out throughout the county. And then, you know, maybe trying to identify, I mean, there's people that are, you know, active as far as leadership roles that's, you know, wouldn't mind be in the face of a project to help us with it, so.
I'll try, I'll schedule a meeting with the group here in a couple weeks.
Right, and have to get stakeholders to find out exactly what, what the focus will be of the stakeholders here.
So you want to raise back your hand and participate in that with us? I think if we get, you know, representative from maybe the financial community and somebody from the health community, different, different respects and disciplines throughout our county would help.
Well, you know, please do from all the other, you know, parent and chaplain or smaller communities would be good. If they're available.
We'll work on that. So that's all I've got to them.
Okay. Doug, did you have anything to report to them?
No, nothing. I'll take exception.
Okay. Okay, we'll move on to notices and communications. Barb had given us the final figures on the valuation and also how that affects the mill levy for next year. And we have somewhat good news there that the valuation from July to November had increased So that made our mill levy come down then from what we had projected from 53.811 to 53.658. So it's always good news to, so actually, our mill levy increase was a couple tenths less almost than what our projection was earlier. So we're, we're, we had projected a one mill increase, so it will be less than one mill now. This is another meeting that we've been having kind of quarterly with surrounding counties, county commissioners, that we've been meeting together. And this time, McPherson County is going to host it on November the 1st and at 6:00 PM. And we'll be serving a meal. So we pump, they need to RSP by October 27th. So as far as I know, I could attend that meeting on November 1st.
I'll be attending.
I plan to attend.
Okay, so you... I'll just give you this. See if you can...
I can do that.
Okay.
We'll miss the KU opening basketball game though, just so you know.
Okay.
We can listen to it on the radio.
We've got the camera.
I bet you will.
Here, put your earbuds in. We're going to call them. We might get in from First County.
Gets with washburns and a warm-up.
It can get beat.
Yeah, it would be a bad year.
We got the, the National County News and K-Works newsletter. Here's another invitation we got for our, our meeting down at Kansas City. The, from Strobel Cook Flat in Strobel. They put on a dinner and have invited commissioners. And that's on the Tuesday night of, of our convention down there. So I've been going to it, so I probably, we need to send the reservations back probably.
I think I'll plan to attend.
Yeah.
So, and they just invite a lot of the commissioners and county officials to...
I won't be attending, Barb.
Just a short drive.
Hey, I'm coming down just for the supper. I guess I could.
Did you get, I guess we...
Yeah.
Said he's in separate, or?
Okay.
Okay, I'll just do that. They don't put too much pressure on us.
Get a meal and a pen out of it, a little calendar.
I think I got two pens last year, so I'm good.
Here's another. We've got a lot of things to tend here. The Conservation District, in the past, they, the award winners, they've been taking a tour and actually going to these places. But this year, they decided to have the meeting at the USDA Service Center in a conference room on Monday, November the 14th. And they're going to probably go over those applications at that time. And they've invited commissioners to attend, so...
What time is that?
Do you have 10 or 11?
Yeah, we'll be doing the presentations.
You got the canvas at 9:00 on that day from the election.
Okay, so I'll just stay in town then.
At 9:00, we'll do the canvas. Unless you want to change the canvas to 8:00.
No.
Yeah, we can change to 8:00.
No, we've got plenty of time, I think.
No, we didn't last year. Remember?
Well, no, we didn't.
Well, it depends on how many provisional ballots there are.
Yeah, so about 11:30 when we got out.
That was...
Yeah, it was a long one.
That was a long one.
I mean, there might be a lot of provisional ballots to consider, so...
We might be better off coming in at 8:00.
I can, I can make note of that.
But it's whatever you guys...
Well, probably so.
I know we have it at 8:00.
Okay. Canvas at 8:00 AM, 14. And then this meeting is what time?
This starts at 11:00.
Oh, okay.
The regular meeting, their board meeting starts at 10:00, but the presentations will start at 11:00. And then they also will be serving a lunch at 12:00. So we maybe can make the lunch.
Yeah, you'll probably make the lunch for sure.
All right. It says they wanted us to RSP that also, so... I guess, were you in for lunch?
I, yes, I will be. I, I have a meeting, board meeting in Kansas City that evening, but I'll just wait till after the lunch to leave.
I'll be there, Lee.
Okay. So you could...
Oh, RSPD, if you want to make the notice, if you want to be attending.
And that's... That was November, was 14?
Fourteenth, is what it said.
At 11:00. Okay. This was, letter was from the Kansas Historical Society. And we've got two people in Dixon County that are applying to get on the National Register of Historic Places. The first one is Ted Pugh. This was, the location is Hoffman Buildings over at 104 South Factory Street in Enterprise. And the other one is from Scott and Chris Osterman. And this is what they call the Engel House. And that's at 102 Highland Drive in Appleby. So those, once they get on the historical list, sometimes there's grant monies that they can apply for and help them restore those facilities. A lot of paperwork here, just clean up here. Okay. Introduction and consideration of resolutions. We have none today. We're unfinished business. We'll go on to other business. And we've got to open bids for the new ambulance, so I'll take over for that.
We received two, two packets from two vendors. They came in by the dead of night, in fact, about this morning. And John has them both, and I'll just let him kind of cover them today. We'll just touch on the fact that we received them and they're giving the next week to go through and make sure that the specs are all met before we actually entertain a decision next week, so.
Yeah, I think you guys did have the opportunity to look through the specs about a month ago and did post them and after that and accepted bids up until this morning at 10:00. Did have four companies that, that throughout the last month that had sent questions and expressed interest in bidding on it. It looks like we had two of those companies actually submit. First bid is from Professional Ambulance in Comanche, Texas. They submitted a bid for a Horton ambulance, which is actually the company and distributor that we, we bought our last two trucks from. The specs were written off of our last truck that we bought, Freightliner. So their bid was received. There it is. For a 2017 Freightliner, same style as, as we currently bought with our last truck. And their bid for that was $251,934 with approximately delivery date of 220 to 250 days after receipt of signed order. The next is from Osage Ambulance out of Missouri. And it's also for a 2017 Freightliner. And their bid is $269,835. And their delivery time is 180 days, subject to chassis availability, so.
How much did, you recall what it cost last time?
About $230...
$231, $239?
I think it was almost $240, so $270, $280, something like that. So, and that was two years ago, we took that bid, so.
Place seemed pretty reasonably consistent for...
Yeah, yeah. Other than the cost of new chassis went up, you know, I'm sure that's showed the increase in price, so.
I read through them, you didn't change anything in the specs for the body that goes underneath?
No, it's a, it's a Freightliner, just...
Right, I know, but I mean, the box that goes on.
No, no. We want to keep them consistent. So our guys, when they check in trucks, they know where the compartments are at.
When they, I saw them setting one, and I noticed a couple of boxes are different.
That's because we want different manufacturers. So the way different manufacturers do it, they set up, they change their body a little bit. It's nice to not have to do that.
Right.
Because if we go with a different one, the way they duck their AC in the back may be different, so you have to move cabinets to do it. And we do have the Horton, we do not have any of these Osage ambulances. I'm familiar with the company and there's places in Kansas that do. We don't have, never have had a Osage. Horton, we have two. Horton ambulance is the last two that we have, the International and the Freightliner. And the other two that we bought more recently are Lifeline vehicles out of Iowa. And then we have that little van that we'll be replacing. It was a med tech that that company's no longer in business. So they all...
Well, what I was referring to, just looking from the outside, the layout of the, you know, I mean, the door wasn't up quite as high.
Yeah, and, and I tell you, the Horton, and that's probably the Horton that we got, the last Horton that we got last time, which is what we spec this time is to have the AC and heat that goes down the side of the box from the front clear to the back, so they can get air on people. The other trucks are clear up at the front, so it has to blow all the way to the back. On a hot day, it does a lot of blowing to try to get back there.
You got the ducking that goes, takes the right back.
The duck, it's got side ducking, so that's worked really well on the truck that we got, the last truck we got. So we did it again. Well, when you do that, it cuts the size of that compartment down to put that duct heat and AC along the side. So we've learned to live with that. It's not a big deal. The positives outweigh the negatives on that, so. So little things you learn over time. But we try to keep all the compartments consistent. And obviously, if you go with a like manufacturer, that's easier than if you switch, because a whole new thing's a little different.
Crews are used to having something, hey, it's here.
Exactly, it's there. It's the same in every truck. The cabinet looks the same and, you know, they have to, we have to put a little sign on the inside, so when they call in on the radio, they know which truck they're in, because they all, you know, it looks similar. Everything's, looks similar, so. So again, I will look through these and be back next week with anything standing. Obviously, the Horton will be pretty close to the specs we wrote, since we wrote them off based upon the Horton truck we bought last time. The other truck will have some exceptions to it, so I'll look through that, so.
So the Horton was, which price was the Horton?
It was the lowest one, $251.
Well, thanks for all your work.
Yeah.
And have some enjoyable reading.
Thank you.
Enjoyable.
Well, like I say, it's, sometimes you might see a little bit of differences in...
Well, we want to make sure, even though we use their specs, that they didn't change anything on us, too, so.
Right, yeah.
But I'm sure it'll be pretty close, so. Okay? Thanks.
Thank you, John.
See you next week.
Okay. So did we take care of all the business executive session?
I'd like to, well, Jeanelle's here. I did ask her this, this morning, she could track the Justice Center, you know, more of a budget, you know, from what the revenue's coming in and, you know, what's being spent and stuff, so we get it started now, so we can all have an idea of what's, you know, passed through and how it's coming in.
Not a problem.
You have something for us today, Dan, on that? Would you become...
I just wanted to hear the bids.
Okay. Anything else?
I move we go into executive session for five minutes for attorney-client privilege.
Second.
Been moved to second. Any discussions?
It'll be 11:30 to 11:35.
Okay. All fair say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, mostly carried.
But I can talk fast.
That is.
I may be returned to regular session.
I'll second it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Okay, now, is there any other matter before we adjourn?
Do we need to give Doug any direction on that, or does he have enough?
Well, I can respond to the letter one of two ways, with a yes or a no.
Well, we'd have to take action in an open meeting, what we decide to do, so that...
Yeah, so I, I would go ahead and make the motion that we direct Doug to send a letter that, yes, we would take the steps to expedite the sale of the property at a tax sale.
Second.
To the percentage you mentioned.
Okay.
So second.
Okay, it's been moved to second. Any more discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
I'll make the notification. Thank you.
Okay.
Do we need to put an address on that for the minutes, or is that really matter? Just say enterprise property or...
Yeah, enterprise property.
So direct Doug to send the letter, yes, to what?
It will be a letter to the bankruptcy trustee.
To bankruptcy trustee.
To affirm the sale of property.
To affirm sale.
Not, not county property.
You want me to put that in the motion, not...
Yeah, it's not county property.
Doesn't have to be the motion, but just a footnote to it.
Regarding the lien lien property tax case.
Okay.
On move, we adjourn.
Second.
Been moved to second, we adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried.